Welcoming Bill McBride remotely.
Oh, he's on now.
He's on now.
Oh, he's on.
He's on. Okay. Bill, can you hear us? Yeah.
Connecting to audio.
Oh, okay. So he's good now?
He's muted.
Oh, he's muted. Okay. All right. We'll go ahead. We'll open this meeting of the HPB on July 28th, 2022. And I guess we have to have approval on starting the meeting. Do we have a motion to begin this meeting?
Make the motion. I'll second it.
Okay, I make the motion. Starting meeting.
We'll call. Member McBride?
He's muted.
You need to unmute yourself, please. Member Evans?
Yes.
Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Lanahan?
Yes.
Chair Pollock?
Yes.
Mr. McBride? Can you unmute yourself?
Give a thumbs up, something.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much. Before we get going here, Kristin said, you know, we ought to really have a hard stop to this meeting. I think that's a good idea, so we don't go on until 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning or something like that. But more realistically, I thought perhaps 7:30 would be a good time to do that, which creates a certain amount of discipline with the speakers, so we can be to the point as much as possible. So 7:30 sound reasonable to everybody? If there's something monumental, we can certainly go beyond that. But why don't we just settle on 7:30? Everybody's agreed? Okay, good. First, I just cover some agenda items here. First is because there are two new members, three new members of the HPB, we'd like to have them familiar with the genesis of the project, the design of the project, that is, and give us some more detail, especially from the architects, because we felt that has been very good in the past. So we will spend some time going through that. I talked to Chris about that. We also want to acknowledge through seat of July 20th letter. Thank you for having that. And then after that, with Jeff's help, we'd like to lay out a path forward on what the HPB will need for approvals. So that's kind of the agenda, and that would be H1A, B, C, and D, those four things we'll talk about. But without further ado, we should begin with the design. Glad to hear it again.
Complex of interest?
Sorry?
Any conflicts of interest?
Oh, yeah, good point.
No, Evan's now.
No.
No.
Okay.
Bill McBride, no.
Okay, thank you, Bill. You're there. All right. Okay.
Okay, well, again, I'm Chris DiMarzo. I've met all of you now. Nice to meet some of you in person. I'm the owner of Canalside Properties and the owner of Mark IV Enterprises. And with me is Craig Jensen from CJS Architects. Craig has a lot of experience in historic things. He can talk more, but just quickly, he was the chair of the Preservation Board of the City of Rochester for a while. He was on the Board of Trustees of the Landmark Society of Western New York, which I know that Jeff has an interest in, spends a lot of time on. And behind us, I have Christina, who's our attorney. So again, Christina probably can't believe that she's here, but I appreciate your time. I can't believe I'm here either. For the three of you, I will just try and get you up to speed in five or 10 minutes, and then you can cut me off or tell me to keep going or whatever. And then I want Craig just to get into the architecture and how we got to the architecture and describe the project. So. Some of you have seen this, some of you haven't. This is an aerial view of the site that we're talking about, 75 Monroe Avenue. This picture was taken in about 1985. And some of you were maybe young at that time. But what it was, was an oil tank farm and fueling station, and it smelled like fuel, and it made a horrible environmental disaster. And I think it made an opportunity, so we'll get back to this. So that's the before. And did I wait through that or I'll just keep going? You know, the after, what I see, again, this is the Seven Acre Site. Very simply, it is seven residential apartment buildings with a driving lane basically all the way around them, parking underneath the buildings to hide as much as we can from view, a clubhouse with a restaurant in it, fitness center, sales office in this area. This is the canal, if you're not familiar with the Monroe Avenue. Monroe Avenue is here. You're familiar?
Very.
Okay.
I'm looking for my dock to put in my subboard.
It's right here.
Where's that going to be for me as a non-resident there?
Well, yeah, well, these will be open to the public, the docks. And an ancillary use to the community will be a pool for the residents. Again, circulation will go around. There's some garages in the back. And then the railroad track is on its side. Craig will get into more of this, but. You know, again, before and after, what I really see is a very new contemporary higher-end community. And this is just one shot. It's just a 3D version. And again, I won't take Craig's thunder, but rooftop terraces and maybe solar panels, green infrastructure, charging for electric cars, stuff like that. It takes features from history, and again, I won't get into that, but very new and what people want these days. Just back to me for a second, just so you know who I am and what I do. I'm a developer. We develop mostly multifamily projects. I've done it my whole life. Our company's been in business 50 years. We own, we built, own, and operate over 2,000 apartments in greater Rochester. And we've been doing pretty well lately. Okay, so let's go back in history, which no one wants to hear. It makes me kind of anxious, but this project started in 2008. So I actually bought it, it started in 2007, so it's been 15 years. In 2008, the majority of the site was actually in the town. This whole site was in the town, except for this little sliver in the village. And so we annexed the site for a lot of different reasons into the village, so that the village would be in charge of the approval process. Everyone was in favor at that time. When we presented that project at that time, it was 220 units. The majority of it was four-story at that time. And we set off. The village created, and we were accepted into the R5 Zone, which had a lot of work that went into it. The R5 specifically allows multifamily on that site. 2012, we went through a seeker process. I don't know if you guys understand what it is, but very complicated process. Took a number of years, many consultants. We obtained a special use permit. 2014, we obtained a final site plan approval. And then in 2015, I'll touch upon, but I'll come back. We, relying on the approvals that we had, and as a request from the village leaders at that time, we knew that there was environmental problems on this site, back to those tanks. And so we took the initiative to start to clean the site. And. Just some of it, but.
What year is this?
This is 2015, 14 and 15. Took us a year. It took us a year. We took 90,000 tons of contaminated oil, which you can see, the oil is just in the soil, running into the canal. And we abated it and properly removed it. We were in the New York State Brownfield Program. And it cost me $6 million of my money, and that's clean. Right now, it's clean. So we have a certificate from the DEC. And as we continue to build, they will continue to monitor the situation. You can see there's air monitors at the time, very complicated process. We were successful in doing it. DEC was out there every minute of the day, keeping an eye on us. And so now we have a clean slate, if you will. Now I'll come back to this with regard to the LWRP things. So over 15 years, this is actually our 175th public meeting on this project. I've kept track. I have notes from every meeting, if you care. Why are we here? Well, A, I wanted to keep moving. B, Jeff said, let's get the three newer members caught up to speed, and then we're going to get into local waterfront revitalization issues. Okay, in the progress, we made an application to the APRB in 2017, and we were denied at that time. Went through a number of years and some lawsuits. We came back about a year ago, and the HPB, in my understanding, the other boards got together and wrote a letter saying, if you do these certain things, we'll take a good look at it. Well, we did those certain things, and we hit the majority of them. The key was to reduce the volume of the project. And we reduced the site, reduced the volume of the buildings 35%. That was a big thing. I think the criteria was 1.85 million cubic feet, and we hit that number. So I met with Craig, we had new architects, we started over. I said, Craig, these are the criteria. Help me get done what they're looking for. So we came back. So this is where we are. We reduced the footprint 16%, reduced the width to the building. I don't know if Bill can hear me, but these are all very important things to Bill and Christina and some other people on the board at that time. And so we started over, and this is where we are. From there, maybe Craig can get you into the buildings and talk about how the design of the buildings got to where we are. And then we can go back and talk about the LWRP things. Any questions for me on what, where I've taken us through history?
Hey, Chris, it's Bill McBride. Would you bring everybody up to date on, we had a series of four, the HPB had a series of four, four information-only meetings with you. Last one, I think in February, where we asked that you make some changes that are reflected in what you're presenting today, particularly in Building 7. Would you describe that, please?
Bill, I think we're going to get a presentation from the architect that's going to lead us through that. That's Jeff.
Yeah, Craig's going to answer that question for us, Bill. But let me do say, and remind people if you didn't know, that again, thank you, Bill, we had a series of meetings last year. And the HPB, they said, look at this, look at that. We made a number of changes. And on November 10th, the HPB got together and wrote a letter generally saying that the mass and scale of the project and the architectural design was generally acceptable. So that came a long way. There wasn't an approval, but working together, that was a good point to get to. So we're still at that point, and then we've answered the question that Bill asked. Because the last building, nobody liked, we redesigned that, and we added some buildings that weren't in there, which was the restaurant and the gazebo and garages, so.
Okay, all right, you're on.
All right, so I'll try not to make this too disjointed. See what we can do. When we first started, I think we looked for a solution that was maybe a little different than the past iterations that have been tried before. And we really tried to focus on the vernacular that you see along the canal. So I think the past iterations were maybe more residential in nature. You know, they kind of tried to focus on maybe what would be expected of a residential community in a village, maybe not as much on what the canal front commercial vernacular is, which is partly industrial and partly kind of agrarian. But there's a combination of these older structures along the canal, whether it's in Chain Place or a lot of other canal communities, where you get, thank you, Chris, you get these structures that are very simple and actually align very well with more contemporary buildings, because they're stripped down, they don't have a lot of ornamentation, they don't have details that you might find on a Victorian house or a Greek Revival house. They tend to be very workmanlike, you know what I'm saying? Which kind of tends to go with the more contemporary structures that, you know, we also have an affinity for. I mean, we do a lot of historic work, and we also do a lot of, you know, contemporary work as well. So I didn't tell you much about, anything about our firm. Maybe I don't need to go there. We don't work, I won't go there. If you want to know.
I'll go there a little.
Yeah.
Well, okay, so we've done all the recent projects at Eastern School of Music, including the restoration and renovations to the Eastern Theater. We did Hatch Hall. We did Kilborn Hall. We're now working on Hanson Hall. We've done all the recent work at Straw Museum, not a recent, although, for the last 30 years or so. So we've done all the expansions there, including the neighborhood that's going on there now. We did all the work on Selwyn Street, Gibb Street, Grove Place, that neighborhood, if you know that neighborhood at all. So we did do the houses on University that were constructed a few years ago, but all the ones in the center of the neighborhood. We do both historic work and new work in Ithaca and Buffalo. We've done all the work on the Central Terminal in Buffalo. We did Graycliff, ongoing restoration that Graycliff, which is from my house on Lake Erie. So anyway, we've, you know, done a lot of both historic work and also kind of new kind of community type work. So when we looked at this, we really thought the canal side vernacular with commercial, industrial, agrarian types of buildings was the way to go. And we also thought that it was really important to break these buildings down into the railroad side and the canal side. Because one of the problems, I think, was happening before was that the volumes were getting big, because every time you put a pitched roof on something that was 60 or 65 feet deep, the gable got very, very large. And it just, the whole volume kind of pumped up. In addition to having a fourth floor, you got this really big gable. So by breaking it down into like kind of a canal side and a railroad side, anytime you put a gable on, it became much smaller. Because we only put the gables on half of the depth instead of the full depth, right? So now you have a 30-foot wide gable instead of a 60-foot, which makes the apex, you know, much more smaller. And we also, you know, were able to use the kind of commercial vernacular to our advantage, in the sense that many of these commercial structures have flat or very low sloping roofs. So again, it takes a lot of volume right out of the building, which to us was a good thing. You know, when you look at buildings like the Flower Mill in Chain Place, it could easily be a residential building, I mean, but it's not, and that's fine. So, you know, how do we use those things, again, to our advantage, right? The other thing we wanted to do is really activate the buildings in the site as much as possible. So, yeah, there you go. Thank you. So we're looking for ways to, you know, energize or activate the ground floor and some of the roof scape and some of the facade. So we've got balconies, we've got roof terraces, and we've got a lot of entrances off the canal side. So the way the buildings function, I think, let's see how I can explain this. Should I go first or you just? Well, yeah, I'm trying to think what's the best. Yeah, I can start there, I guess. Yeah, between these two, it'll explain it. So, you know, that's the example of a gable that only covers half of the building. And with this canal side approach to the building, you know, it kind of is represented as a separate building, almost like you're on a city block. And there's a, as there is, there's essentially a canal street, and then a railroad street. So if you're on Railroad Street, you're kind of experiencing this building. And if you're on Canal Street, you're experiencing this building. And the fact that there's no space in between, and they're joined, really isn't an issue. When you circulate a block in a very urban condition, you don't really oversee the back courtyard of any building anyway. So whether that's there or not there, you know, we don't really see that as an issue. And it kind of helps scale the project down to much more kind of pedestrian-oriented, you know, kind of series of events types of places, instead of like these large buildings. We're not trying to think of this as seven buildings. We're trying to think of this as a whole streetscape or canalscape. That could be any number of buildings. We don't know how many, and we don't care, right? So then the next strategy was to say that on these buildings, you know, along the canal front, we'll have some that are two stories and some that are three stories, and then we'll go back down to two stories, which give us, you know, again, a more interesting profile, you know, on the kind of skyline, because it's just more interesting, breaks it down, lets us break it down into different materials, whether it's brick or siding or melpan or whatever it is. And then, and the other advantage we get is this railroad street residential unit that's on the back now has a roof terrace that looks toward the canal. So what you would think would be the least valuable unit, because on the railroad side, is now maybe the most valuable unit, because it has the terrace on the canal side, in addition to its exposure that it already has on the good side. So in this building, we've got a terrace here and a terrace there, with taller buildings in the middle, but other times we'll reverse it, and we'll basically put a, you know, three-square building here with a terrace there that either services the unit that's here or the unit that's behind, the same people there. So we just create different variations as we kind of go down the site. And similar to Main Street, you know, at some points with these buildings, they are attached, and, you know, from a, we had this kind of discussion, I think, before. These will be permitted as a single building, but perceptually, they may be perceived differently. They could be perceived as four, and, you know, no one's going to go back and look at the permit to find out how many buildings we have. And in some cases, there'll be a gap before we get to the next piece. And that next piece may be attached to several more, but on Main Street, as you walk down, you don't necessarily think, oh, there's a gap, therefore now the next building is a new building, whereas, oh, there's no gap, therefore these two buildings that are attached are one building. You don't think of it that way, and you won't think of it here either.
Put the next one to show it yourself.
Yeah. So, yeah, so, you know, here you go, right? So the village, you know, but there are alleys, you can see these buildings too, that separate them, and we will have that as well. And then, as I said, you know, you know, just putting some little terraces out on the front side and the canal side will help activate it. It's not only active in the sense that people will use these, but also it kind of creates a, what do you call it, like, almost like a... I don't have a word for that that I use sometimes. I don't know what the word is. I'm not as much of a thought. It's like potential energy, right? So whenever you walk down a street and you see a series of doors or you see a series of stoops, you think of those as places where things can happen. It's kind of a communicating to you, oh, someone could leave or come in. You walk down your typical street and, you know, residential street in an urban environment, there's not always a lot of activity on a residential street. But the fact that there are places where things could happen makes, still enlivenes it a lot, you know? I mean, whether the first coming out the door or not, it still makes, it talks to you about what could happen, just like a porch does. And that's what we want to create along the street here. So that's what we're doing. That's kind of the strategy. And then, you know, we can also take, obviously, certain elements like staircases that service the upper floors or elevator shafts that service the upper floors, and make those into vertical kind of components, so it kind of, again, further breaks it up. We can put on, you know, little kublas or dorms and things like that, again, to break it up and use different siding materials to break it up. It's really just create that scale and texture and that kind of pedestrian-oriented environment that we're looking for. And then the additional layer of the clubhouse and the gazebo and those types of structures further kind of create just more, more layers and more interest to add into what we've got going on. Obviously, Chris said, you know, we put a lot of parkment to ground, a lot more than you would find in a place like Chain Place, which is, I think, to our advantage, because if we can do that, we, in those older buildings, you can't go back. You can't go back and do that now. So, but we can, so we did. Let's see. I think, you know, as, I think Bill had mentioned, you know, this is just the two buildings toward the center, where we get a little smaller and a little bit longer in the opposite direction. But again, still breaking it down, both in terms of height and in terms of width. And there you can see, you know, our access to park in there.
Can you talk for a second about some of the historic precedents? How we got to the, the special permit directed us to use a canal commercial historic style and incorporate features from the village? Can you talk about how you did that here?
Yeah, I think probably. I'll see. So I think, you know, we certainly, the other ones, we'll have to go there. We're going to go.
What did you add or draw?
Are you thinking here?
Yeah. How we used the barn and.
Yeah, I think, yeah, so I think, you know, so you can see, those are evident here. You know, whether it's, you know, these little rooftop, you know, structures, or whether it's the gable on the barn, or just kind of overall kind of simple forms that you see here. And we took those kind of cues from a series of different structures, trying to say, okay, how do we make, you know, this as compatible as possible without being, you know, derivative or kind of overly, kind of, you know, referential? I mean, you want to create those connections, but you also want to kind of not copy them. Copy them, exactly, right. So that's where we're headed there. With Building 7, you know, we always struggled a little bit with Building 7. And each of these buildings, I think, improved as we.
I don't have a blow up.
No, that's okay. I was going to go like this. I find, actually, because I didn't know. Why not? You know, each of these buildings kind of improved as we moved along, and I think we got comments, and we made adjustments. But in general, I think we had the general direction right with the remainder of the buildings. And 7 was tough, because it's longer, the site narrows at that end. You can't get the road to circulate around 7, so it kind of cuts in front of 7, which is okay. But it was a longer building, and I think there was some discussion about, you know, is it too long? Is it out of character? We did some comparisons to lengths of buildings at Chain Place and trying to understand, you know, if it's really out of scale with what you see in the village, and you can make an argument that it's not. But nevertheless, our solution now, which I don't think you'd seen prior to the submission that Chris made a week or so ago, is to basically break it into two buildings. It's still on this called Building 7, but it's in two parts. We have a bridge that connects the two upper floors. I can find it. Two, yeah, I can find it very soon. It should be in the.
7, I'm sure.
You got it? Yeah, so I've isolated just the canal side, but you have both front and back, right? So, you know, this, this basically encompasses a couple of things for us. You know, it still gives us the ability to service it from one underground parking structure with a ceiling elevator going down to that parking structure that takes you up, you know, to the upper floors. It connects the exit stairways on both buildings, you know, so you can use an exit stairway regardless of which building you're in. You don't have to build extra stairways, like two more extra exit stairways. And it creates a connection front to back from railroad side to canal side, which I think is nice. The bridge actually becomes another architectural element, which is not uncommon in old commercial or industrial neighborhoods. You know, they use that all the time, where you have, we're working on a project downtown for Constellation Brands and moving down to the Aqueduct Buildings. And there are a number of bridges that connect those buildings down there, because frankly, when Laura's co-op had it, there's buildings across the street. They're like, well, we need to get over here more often, and we're going to, so there's bridges, you know? And same thing with Eastern School of Music. We've got a bridge there. So I think that's, again, an element that actually adds, I think, to the overall character of the community. I don't see it as a downside at all. Hopefully, you guys don't either. We've done some other comparisons, which I can get into if you want. We did some for the zoning board to try and show, you know, the scale of this development, you know, as it compares to other canal side communities, including, you know, Chain Place. But maybe I'll leave it there and see where your questions go, and then we can expand in areas that weren't. areas that weren't...
Well, since building seven is right here, it's a four-story building, right? You want to talk about that because that was contrary to the letter?
Yeah, right. So we had in prior iterations, always remained at three stories. And I think it was only after February when we left, left, left this board that we got some feedback from planning and zoning that there was too much uniformity across the site. And that, that this uniformity, were there ways we could mitigate that? And one of the suggestions in discussions with them was, well, maybe building seven should have a fourth floor because maybe that would add some additional diversity. And, and we were open to that idea and we don't disagree that, you know, more diversity is good, it's just, you know, how do you get there? So this is a result of that conversation. So we have maybe, I think, five residential units on the, four or five residential units on the fifth floor or fourth floor, sorry, fourth floor. It doesn't change, from a constructability standpoint, it doesn't create any obstacles for us. And I, we thought it was successful, so it's, it's, it's here because it was the last iteration of what we produced. I don't think we're adverse to talking about that, but, you know, it works better in building seven than I think it would work in the other buildings because the building is longer, so it can be a part of the building without feeling like it's the whole building, you know what I'm saying? Like if it was a shorter building and you had a fourth floor, you'd have, the majority would end up being a fourth floor, whereas now it's a minority, it's like a little piece that pops up, little is a relative term. So, that's where we are.
I think it adds a nice variety to that building and I also like the way that it frames the walkway that's in between there.
The bridge.
The bridge because it's, one thing I was curious about, like I'm, I'm visualizing this bridge and it does seem to me that you would not see that bridge as so much of a connection like making one building because it is small enough and it's set back enough. And I like that it's down to the floor.
No, I like it's down too. So the one element that's on the right-hand side of the bridge where it pops up there, that would actually be the second floor of a duplex unit because obviously there's no way to get, and we've got a floor plan to do that, there's no way to get to that from the elevator and staircase, you know what I'm saying? So you only access that upper piece from within the unit, whereas everything to the left, I'm talking about the north elevation now, not the south elevation, it comes to the left and right. So everything to the east, I guess, if I got my directions right, you know, is accessed by the elevators there. But I agree, having those pop up higher makes the bridge more successful.
Just a bridge, it almost...
Yeah, if it had a group elevation, it wouldn't be quite as successful.
It's set in from one side.
It's dead in the middle, isn't it?
That's right. At the corner.
It's really just a corner.
You're talking about the bridge.
The bridge is only, you know, APY or whatever it is, yeah.
Bill McBride here. Let me, let me make one, make sure I'm clear on this. When we had issues with four stories way back a year or so ago, you had four stories on most of the buildings. And as I read your new plans on building seven, I call, I, let me call it building seven A and seven B, it used to be 283 feet long and now it's about half of that, each one is half that, right?
That's correct, yeah.
Those, those fourth floors that you put, that you show on seven A and seven B are simply the removal of the 13 feet width between the two buildings A and B. You haven't added any, so we're still at the same total volume count, is that correct?
Yeah, I, that's essentially correct. I couldn't say if we're a little higher or a little lower, but it's essentially a trade off, you're right. We're going a little bit up and taking out some of the middle, that's correct.
So 13-foot gap between the two buildings with a bridge. And we picked up a fourth floor, a little bit of a fourth floor on building seven A and seven B, but that is not the kind of issue we faced on the fourth floors across all of the buildings a year or so ago. I just want to clarify.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, a year ago we were, and the special permit provides for up to 28% four stories. This is now probably 2%.
Yeah, I think something's wrong. Anyway, go ahead and throw in the question.
Yeah, let's talk about if we're, we certainly want to not leave the buildings, but if, if nothing else on the floor at the moment, we ought to talk about the two additions of the, the pier or what?
The restaurant, the clubhouse.
The clubhouse, I couldn't, you know, not really...
Before we leave the buildings, can you just tell us how many units there are in the total project now, including this new fourth floor?
Right now, there's 154.
Which is the same for the last...
But I just want to know that.
Yeah, we ended up putting them on the upper floor.
But it's still 154.
I just wanted to add it as someone who's been through the process almost as long as Chris, that it was a long time coming to what we considered to be a very thoughtful interpretation of the canal industrial vernacular and a lot of other different stylistic things came up and were discussed and that, that we, as the board, felt like this was, was a very successful approach. And that is where we got to last November after, I'm not sure how many years it was, but it was, we, we did entertain a lot of, I don't know how many architects and different styles, but this, this fit with what our code asked for, that was not a direct copy of something that happened in the past, but fits with the village. And that's harder to achieve than you would imagine.
Yes, yes.
But yeah.
If you don't get on the right, off on the right foot initially, you're just never going to get there, right? So I think the initial decision was good and I think that's what helped over time get us to a decision that works.
And I guess just before we leave the buildings, could you just talk a little bit about the exterior materials that you're going to be using?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, we're trying to be respectful of the kind of materiality that you would find in this kind of industrial, commercial, ovarian kind of context. And if I can find the right page, yeah, I split it up, but there we go, thank you. So, you know, we're talking about a combination of materials like these, right? So we're talking about obviously some brick, some fiber cement siding, which we can either do like with an integral pigment or...
Are you familiar with fiber cement siding?
It's like, it's like a hard, like hardy siding is one example, right?
Hardy board?
Yeah. You buy hardy siding, it simulates clavoured siding, right? And then either comes in pre-painted or repainted.
It just lasts forever.
Yeah, it just...
Looks better than wood. It's more expensive.
Takes paint better than wood.
It does.
And you can also buy it in panels, so you can apply it in other forms, like, so it could be more of a board bed type of operation or it could be more of a plank kind of operation. So we can create different, like when you look at an old barn, it doesn't always clavoured, it oftentimes is just planks, you know, or boards that are just set, you know, next to each other. So we can get that look as well. We can, we can also buy it like with the pigments that are already integral, so it's a little like more, well, it's got a little more depth to it, you know, the color, because it's kind of in the material as opposed to on the surface. You know, we would do some wood, we would do some metal siding, which again, you see, you know, in these areas. We have more than one brick color, we have a series of different bricks that we would use, some that might be a little bit more handmade and some that might be darker or lighter.
Full-size bricks or more like veneer bricks?
I think the intent would be, I think the intent is to do a full bed, you know, like a four-inch...
Yeah, on this size of a building, you need a big brick.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. You can have like a thin brick, like we would do, like, yeah. You know, we're talking about galvanized finishes on some of the metal, you know, so it's kind of that, again, has that kind of industrial quality. That's the general palette. You know, it's not an extreme, but if you add those number of materials plus the color variation you can get in all those, you end up with, you know, a pretty wide range. That's the general palette.
I just, so I absolutely love the diversity of it. It's just, I, I wouldn't, could you speak more to the fact that I think there may be some hesitation with, you know, what's new is old and what's old is new and the fact that a lot of standard building materials like this do seem more contemporary and kind of how that kind of plays with the, the look of the buildings? Yeah, I think that's where there may be some hesitation. It's just, you know, it's, it is so common in the village, but also when you, when you use like a new C metal, it like, it just seems more modern, historic, you know?
So I guess what I would say to that, and, you know, when you walk down a village street, the finishes are often a lot more pristine, right? And you walk down Shane Place and you see rust and, you know, all kinds of other things, which is funny. So we've done some contemporary buildings, you know, with, you know, wood siding that can be open, you know, exposed to the weather and basically just ages very quickly because it goes gray like right away. If you use like a Kummer or a repair or something like that, it just ages very quickly. You know, it doesn't rot, it just turns gray.
Right, yeah.
And then we've used Corten steel on buildings like this as well, where it's a self-weathering steel that develops like a protective rust coating, you know, very early and then it just is this dark reddish brown color for the rest of its life. So, you know, the only thing with that is you gotta be careful where you use it because the rust will drip onto the sidewalk or whatever. So you really want like some gravel below it or something that will, you know, take those drips, you want it over your entryway, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And then, you know, brick obviously ages really well, so regardless of when you put it up, it's good. So we would, you know, use some of those in addition to this fiber cement, which if you use the internal pigment, has a little bit more depth to it. I think those can give us a little bit more of the patina maybe that you hope to have on a project like this, instead of having everything be so crisp that it doesn't fit because it feels a little too busy or something like that.
Yeah, so I think that clears it up. Great for me because, you know, you're looking at illustration and it's perfect and what it sounds like to me is that there is that intentionality for that more, but whether it looks, so we're looking at it at the genesis and not the length of it. And I guess just for my own application, I mean, are there any properties that you can think of that I might be able to just go look at that do use more modern materials but that have been used in a similar application, not necessarily in the village, but just so I can kind of wrap my head around that look?
And Chris, that was a question I had too, and when you were listing off all the buildings that you've been doing, Eastman, Strong, Kim Street, the historical work, do you have a list of places where we can go see this material that you're going to be using on these buildings?
I can give you some examples, although they're not...
Yeah, some fact-finding kind of mission.
Well, then can you bring in like materials?
Yeah, we can bring in materials. I think that would be the probably easiest thing. So, so we've done some, this is a little different, but it's close to what I had at the moment. So we've done some buildings along the Buffalo River, which is kind of an industrial area. It's not like canal, but it's an industrial corridor with industrial buildings like grain elevators and things like that. So a couple of buildings we've done there, one is, now, they're very different buildings. If you look at these, you're going to be like, well, we don't want that, but the materials are successful. So one was a replacement for a giant warehouse that was torn down and the historic kind of community there wanted something that was kind of, gonna make reference in a way to this old warehouse that was kind of lost to you in the ballpark. So the whole building is weathered steel, it's Corten steel, like this weathered steel siding. And it's got galvanized balconies hanging on it and it looks, it's got a patina to it, you know, and the bottom of it is perforated metal, also weathered steel, so you kind of see through the bottom.
I think those materials though, Craig, we're going to use very sparingly.
Yeah, they'll be sparingly, I agree.
I think to answer your question, Craig designed and we built a building on Goodman Street and we just finished it about a year ago. It's 625 South Goodman. I'll, I'll send you a...
That is all galvanized balconies on it.
Yes. And in terms of the materials, it should be something similar to that. It has a lot of fiber cement siding, it has the large brick, actually in dark colors. It's, it's, it's a contemporary looking building, a little more contemporary.
That building is a little contemporary.
Yes, and it's five stories, but the materials are similar.
Many of them are similar.
That has orange colors on it and dark colors, which, it's not this...
Yeah, the color palette will be different.
But the materials are similar.
That's exactly what I was like, of course, like, yeah, like not, I mean, an historic building, just these materials, how they appear weathered and...
And there's, let me see, hang on a second. And there actually is some, some wood features on that. So if you want to drive by or if you want me to show you, I'd be happy to give you a little quick tour or send you the website, whatever's easiest.
And we could certainly send you some photos of that. We've done another one on Buffalo River that has weathered wood siding and fiber cement and organ metal siding, you know, so again, it's just all the industrial materials. They're a little more industrial even than this would be because the buildings are bigger and it's kind of a little bit more of an industrial zone, more like tanker going by. But still, I think between what Chris is referencing and I'm referencing, I think you combine those two, you have a pretty good idea.
Yeah, that's like one of my expectations is just kind of the, how it will look, not just in the illustration. And so I appreciate that, thank you.
Anything else?
Well, I guess just a question maybe to Jeff or Christina, who's been doing this for a very long time, but to allow like the fiber cement, we don't have that anywhere else. We actually have the proof. Just talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, what standards we hold other people see.
Right.
Yeah, we use a lot.
Well, it, yeah, definitely it's on a case-by-case basis, at least when I was here. If there was a situation where, well, on a, on a historic building, then it would be a little tougher route to get that put in. However, this is all new construction, so you actually have a different set of rules for new construction. And I'm trying, I mean, they actually have it on the Flower Mill Building and I know we have a couple of houses that have it, that are historic, but, yeah, I mean, it was, it was deemed appropriate because it can look just like wood. Yeah, I will say that there are houses and buildings that they came and said, you know what, we'd like to not paint anymore.
Right, you'd like to not paint, exactly.
No, there are a few houses, the Ark House sits on, next to the Presbyterian Church. I think they had a situation where it wouldn't hold paint anymore, they were going to have to do a massive replacement and because of the usage of the house, they ended up doing the whole house over in, in fiber cement. But it was very particular for the historic properties.
Yeah, but I think the mill in work, I think that is.
Oh, it definitely, yeah.
Is it, I don't know.
Yeah, it definitely is and I remember there, I can't quote the specific part of the code, but I know that there was a separate, separate set of things you had to follow for new construction, which there's not that much new construction in the village, so it doesn't come off.
We've certainly used it in historic districts in the past. I can't say we've used it in the village of Pittsburgh, but we've used it many times in historic districts.
It can be very successful though. I mean, I find that, you know, even a practiced eye, you'd be hard cast to say.
And you can vary the exposure, you can make the exposure a little more random if you want, you can do things to kind of even push it a little further if you want to kind of add a little more character.
In the past, we had required to not use, they usually had like a patterned side.
That was, I was gonna say, is a classic mistake.
Yeah.
Yeah, they got a full wood side and I don't know where they...
Yeah, you combined this, you combined a...
You've got the flow where they're selling it to Jeff Pollock, all right. Great. I have one more question.
One more thing?
Well, for now, just one more thing. So, new build, new standards, I'm just curious in terms, can you talk me through, you've done all this environmental cleanup, what kind of environmental standards are you putting into the building itself? You said there might be solar panels, there might be greenscape, there might be, are you doing LEED standards in terms of building practices, like how's it, I'm just curious, this is a new build, how do you...
It's not our intent to build a LEED building. As you may have seen on TV, prices are crazy on everything, if you can get material. And hopefully when we build this in near future, the cost is just skyrocketing, so. But again, at the Goodman Street building, we did do the entire roof in solar panels. It's been very effective, so we know how to do it and we, we'd be interested in doing it here. Again, when we get the approval, we'll see what the New York State credits are, but it's my intent to do that if possible. We, we have hookups for solar cars, we intend to do that. The under, in, in the site plan, this is really planning board stuff, but underneath the parking area... parking areas is stormwater storage tanks, which is another technique of holding water back. I'm sure that there will be small roof gardens on top of these terraces, so those kind of green things, natural, indigenous, what's the word, the landscaping will be native as much as possible.
Chris, can I stop you for a minute? Somebody just looked in the window, is that front door open or you went to the other room?
I'll go check.
She wasn't locked.
Yeah, it's open.
Okay. So yes, we're gonna use many techniques as we can. We're green in this structure.
Okay. So it's charging stations underground or outside?
Most likely would be under, in the parking garage.
And are there any extra generators or things that will be outside the building that we need to screen, et cetera?
No.
Anything else?
Let me ask this, Bill McBride, is it appropriate to go around the table now and say, particularly on building seven, are, is, has the applicant addressed this at very least directionally on the issue of mass and scale, building seven?
You're asking the board.
Are you asking the architect to speak on that or the board?
I think every board member should log in if they want to.
But you really repurpose the space so it's roughly, pretty much the same.
Yeah, that's right. Basically just shuffle it and move some off and take them out of the.
Frank, we've been so far down on the project, I mean, I feel from a business perspective, it's like, you know, who's looking from either side of the canal?
Well, it is to a point, but not the most visible.
As things recede into the distance, the height is not going to be perceived the same as it was up in our, I mean, that fourth floor is going to be much.
Wrap your head around the scale of the property just from the bridge, it's just like, where's the end of it?
Well, the length of this, you know, when we did a comparison, if you start at Aladdin's and the, there's like a real joint to Aladdin's, you know, yeah, Red Barn. If you start at Red Barn and you walk from Red Barn to the Olives or whatever's at the next bridge, you know, that walk is essentially the same as this walk. You know, I mean, they're virtually the same, just very, very close.
Sorry to interrupt. There's a watering break on the new bridge that was spraying under the cement. A pipe came apart and just started flushing water. That gentleman was knocking, closed the valve off and wanted to tell us to see if we had any intrinsic contact, so started to interrupt.
Very good point.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
So that bridge will be delayed a little longer now.
Yeah, sounds like, oh my god.
Craig, a couple of things that I thought might be helpful, I know it's a long elevation, but to actually see all of these things.
In one.
In one, unless I missed it, I saw the site plan, but.
It's so, we can certainly provide it. I don't have that with us tonight. The problem, of course, is, you know, it gets very small because in order to show the entire length, unless we did a piece of paper that's twelve feet long, which we could also do.
I have it here, actually. It rolls out the sole.
You've had, you don't have it tonight.
I was just thinking, like, when I was looking at building seven and thinking, well, now how is this gonna look like this, this space? I was thinking the thirteen feet, that feels a little stingy, couldn't that be a little bit wider in there? How does that compare to this one over here? And, you know, I'm putting them all next to each other, and I just realized I haven't really ever seen all of them together. And for anybody who was still becoming familiar with this site and these buildings, three-D representations are very helpful. I think I've got a pretty good feel of how this building four is, and I don't think I have a problem with the mass and scale of it, I think that you dealt with it pretty well. But somebody else just looking at this flat elevation might not get the feel for how the little bridge, you know, really chases into the background and how this break, if you're looking at it from an angle, you'll see a break, and it will feel like two buildings.
Certainly it will. I mean, I think everyone will, it is two buildings, really. I mean, every aspect other than the letter of the law by New York State Building Code.
But if people were still, you know, grappling with, getting familiar with this, I, obviously, you know, that's pretty.
To answer your question, I do have, and I accurately put together to scale, I think it's maybe eighth scale, which still takes up this whole table. And I think that she may have, if anyone's interested, they can come see it.
I'm thinking right now, I probably could take these all out, right?
These are all printed at the same scale, you know, so if I was to do this and then I was to line all these things up, you would eventually get this whole street scale, you know? So, I mean, I'm over halfway right now, as you can see.
There's a lot of tables.
Oh, a long one, I have, I have a long one. I hope that would help.
Your question is if someone wants to see it.
Well, yeah, I'm feeling pretty good about it, but I guess I definitely had a little bit more time to get comfortable with it and, and understand what you're doing.
But it is here if you want.
Yeah, and it's important, but again, I think just like Chain Place, you've got to keep in mind that it's very hard to experience this whole thing at one time. When I think about, you know, Aladdin's, I never really think about olives or, you know, it's like a whole different part of my walk. I'll get there eventually, you know, but I.
Yeah, I'm thinking, like, even, even more so than that, like, a couple of perspective streetscapes might really, you know, how you're saying, like, that's way down there. I'm never, it'll appear differently, and I think you're absolutely right, but you know exactly how that's gonna look.
I took some, yeah, so this is an interesting drawing too, that could help. The true streetscape, I took one because I was doing this comparison between this and Chain Place not too long ago. I took a photo from in front of Aladdin's looking down the street, you know, and of course, you don't see anything because there's a few trees and things, but by the time you get, it just, you don't know what's there. And this is kind of the same way. If you do a perspective that's not in aerial or something that's from a distance, if you really do one that's experiential, right on the side, like you're standing right here. You don't even see it, you can't see it. So, I mean, you know, and then if we go from the aerial view out here, it becomes a little bit deceptive, because then you see a lot more, but it's, it's not, it's not a view you're gonna experience. So, you know, that kind of tells a story that we don't think is correct, frankly. And I can show you this, which we could do.
Well, I'm, you know, just feeling like everybody might benefit from like, oh my gosh, but this, this is what you'll actually see.
Which it may help, it may help, even though, even though you can't see it all, it still may convince you that, because you don't, that's a good thing, right? So, we can't see that, well, isn't that okay, you know?
Yeah.
And it is just generally deceptive when you kind of look at it from like this very linear perspective opposed to the orientation of the buildings on the site plan.
And then you also, you know, in this illustration that Chris handed me, you also have to think about the layering in that direction. So we're trying to layer the site, even though it's narrow, from Canal Street to Rowan Street, by layering, you know, these buildings and creating kind of a Rowan Street side, there's Kale Street side, and then the clubhouse and the foreground, you get, you know, a series of events going in that direction as well, which creates more of a kind of community character. It's not gonna feel like entirely like we're just stretching these things out along the canal. You're probably gonna recognize, you're gonna see more buildings in the north-south direction in some respects, or think you do, than you're gonna see in the east-west direction. Because here, you can actually see the smaller end, it's not the long end. Yeah, and you'll see, right. So you may think about more of that north-south number of buildings than the east-west, because you can't see those until you get there. You know, you get there eventually.
Okay, so we have a representation that you can look at here, right?
I don't know what the date is.
It's not this, these buildings.
No, I don't want to. It's older, yeah, it's an older version, but it's, I'm just saying a thing, not that. I want to work with.
Yeah, we'll work with this.
I agree with you, but I want to work with the plan.
You want to do it, you can put it all together here.
Yeah, you can make your own.
I'd like to move on to the restaurant and the other things we haven't looked at at all. Give us some feeling for that.
Yeah, I saw that area, yeah. So with the clubhouse, which I think we probably have on one of the last pages of the package, you know, this is something we, we hadn't looked at with you previously. And so we're doing a masonry base on the canal side because there is a lower level that only opens out to the canal. So this is really, you know, one and a half stories on the street side, and then as you get on the dock side, you get this additional floor where there'll be services for voters, you know, like the toilet room or something like that, you know, very minimal services at the lowest level. And then on the, the upper level or main level, that's where the essentially restaurant and clubhouse functions take place. The upper portion is really just a clear story that provides light into this building, and there's no occupied space on the upper level. A little tower element, you know, it just kind of helps kind of punctuate it and break it down, gives it a little bit more, you know, maybe symbolic content or makes it, you know, a little bit more, more interesting. But it's essentially a big long shed. There is like a little dying terrace out on the canal side, you know, at that upper level looking out over people that would be on the, on the, well, it's not a dock, what do you call it?
Yeah, a dock.
Do you call it a dock? I guess, probably not, I guess it's good. Yeah, that's about it. We're trying to keep it, you know, again, super simple. It doesn't even need as much articulation as some of these other buildings, I think, because it's, it's lower and it's, you know, this kind of singular function, so.
Where will the parking be for this?
So, you know, the clubhouse is intended for residents, so that portion, people would just park where they live. But the restaurant portion, they would either park, there's some parking in the center of the site, like right between buildings four and five, it's right there, so they would park there, and then walk the clubhouse, and then there's on-street parking along.
That's end to end, that's end to end.
Yeah, this is parallel parking, this is parallel parking. So you have parallel parking along here that people can use, or this little, you know, two little, these are one-sided parking lots, really tiny. But again, if you made a big parking lot, you're not gonna like the way it looks. So it's better, it's better to have these little guys here and here.
I don't want a big parking lot, I don't want it in any way, but I know, I don't agree with parking requirements, but I know that we have that. And so we're talking about putting in a restaurant, I need to know if that's even gonna pass before, like, right, that's a thing?
Yeah, we have the parking.
It meets the parking requirement.
Right, exactly.
And for the occupancy, which is 120 high seats, yeah.
And in terms of public use, it is available to all, not just residents.
Correct.
You guys are gonna own the restaurant?
Well, I mean, we'll own the building, we'll probably lease out to a restaurant too, but it's not my expertise.
Pretty typical. So this is essentially a one-story building, though?
Correct.
Seen from the street inside the development, okay.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be a one-story building from the street side.
Yeah, what he called a clear story, it's just glass, so it'll be a cathedral on the inside, if you will.
Yeah.
And we don't want to make it taller in general, that little tower kind of gives it a little punctuation mark, but you don't want to block, you know, views from these other properties. It's nicer to have it a little bit lower.
Okay. So on the, on the north side elevation, like, I guess that's, I should be doing that at almost water level?
Yeah, that's right. The black line essentially is, you know, like, the edge of the dock and it's a little, yeah, that's the level.
And so can, can you talk to me at least about these windows, these giant bay windows here in terms of like design inspiration, where those are coming from, from an element perspective?
The kind of arched windows at the base there.
Yeah, bay windows, but yeah.
Yeah, so those arched openings there, you know, oftentimes when you do a masonry wall, you know, you think that arch is kind of like a natural way to create, we can do it with a lintel, like a, you know, stone or steel lintel, that was commonly done too. The arch just seems like, you're right, it's probably not something that you could easily find in the building, if we looked around. You might find it somewhere. It kind of goes with what we think of building an old-style masonry wall, that it arches a natural device. We wouldn't be opposed, you know, to revisiting that and saying, hey, we could do this steel lintel or something else. Yeah, I can't tell you that there's a lot more coming from anywhere.
Yeah, there is no outside dining there, correct? That porch across the north side is not outside dining at all.
There would be some outside dining on the floor above those masonry arches, you know, it's a relatively shallow porch where we could put some, some tables underneath the roof there, so it's.
And I understand it's, you know, not purely just in our village, but the code does ask to look towards other canal side communities, but I was just asking.
Yeah, no, it's an interesting point. I mean, you can see, like, there's some masonry arches, you know, right there that, you know, form that kind of facade. And if we look around, we might find others, but.
I think this is in Lyons, New York. It's not as much of an arch, it's more of a lower.
Yeah, like a flat arch or kind of, yeah. So, and a lot of times you'll see arches that are very subtle, and then the window is not necessarily following profile of the arch, the window is flat, but there's kind of like this very shallow, so that could be another arch. I wouldn't be opposed to.
This north elevation has like three big glass windows here.
Yeah, that's what we're hoping, that's what we're hoping. So the use down there, I don't know, I wasn't, I didn't develop a plan for this.
The program is that on the first floor, the majority of that building will be a restaurant. And then the other side of that on the first floor will be a leasing office lounge area.
Side to side.
Side to side, that's correct.
Front to back, okay, yeah.
On the lower level will be storage for the restaurant, dry storage and things like that, and then fitness center working out on the.
That's where, that's where those arch openings are, because I know.
Fitness center.
Yeah, that's the fitness center. I didn't develop a plan for this, John and Dirk worked on this, but I know that the storage for restaurants on the other side, so that, those glass windows have to be the fitness center then, because.
And so the fitness center will work its way out to the pool area, so that will tie together with the, the resident portion of the building.
Yeah, it's generally resident portion to the west and generally restaurant to the east.
And so are these garage doors on the other side? On the other side of the windows here, what are those arches?
Yeah, again, that's, that's gonna be part of the restaurant.
That would be one of the restaurant storage or where maybe boat storage, I don't know what, I don't know what.
Yeah, we don't have a.
Oh yeah, I'm less concerned about the use, just more like what it.
What is this?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they just try to keep the arches on the.
So I'm very concerned about these four criteria, right, that we're willing to talk to do it. Well, because in these drawings, just to humor me, right, the actual result, an overriding village public benefit, and I, you know, as I hear about a fitness center, as I hear about a pool, as I hear about landscaping and green spaces and gardens and terraces, talk to me about the public benefit, not just the residence.
Sure. You want to do that or you want me to?
No, no, I'm sorry. I mean, in general, for the last 50 years, there's been no public use there. And what we're willing to do is to, you know, open all of this new sidewalk area up to the public, including this dock area. As you walk along, what I'm gonna call from here to here, what I'm gonna call the promenade, sorry to block your attention. And there are a series of gazebos which are in your package, I think, on the second block of the building. Sitting areas.
Trash receptacles.
Trash receptacles. The clubhouse will have a bathroom facility for the public if somehow it came up with your boat and wanted to use a public bathroom. We've talked with the local fire marshal, he's interested in using a fireboat here to keep it there because there's no access, they don't have access right now. And so the general answer is from nothing to something, you know, it's, it is a dead end, it's not, it's not a, maybe not a destination, but just another loop of access to the public.
Including the designated green space at the front, now, after you remove that building, that should be a park-like setting that's open to the public.
Approximately how big would that public park be, as we're talking about item D?
Be considered a public park.
Yes, thank you for that. Open to the public.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's less than an acre.
Okay. And can residents of the village or just town residents launch there, can they use the dock?
They can use the dock, there isn't a launch, but there, there is opportunity for hand-carry boats, canoes and stuff like that, that you can park here and then walk down the ramp to the dock and then get out.
That's what's on that one side, the ramp, is that?
Yeah, it ramps down, ramps down both ways really, from here and.
Oh.
Yeah, it connects all the way across through the front there. But yeah, like you said, you could launch a kayak or canoe.
That's the.
You can't launch a powerboat.
Not just a kayak, no matter.
Towing motor. We have some elevations of that area that meet the canal and that there wasn't.
Yeah, so I think, you know, we'll, in order to produce those, we have to get back together with the civil engineer and kind of combine what he's done and what we've done. But we could certainly do an elevation that shows, you know, this in context with the docks and that whole thing, so you can understand, you know, that overall canal state.
And so in the terms of usability of that, it is, so the parking accessibility is it, the underground structure is limited to the residents and then there's availability of public parking and, okay.
Yeah. So the underground structures would be for residents only, and they would also, on occasion, be parked above the underground spaces, obviously the garages, they'd be parked there. But based on the number of parking spaces, a lot of the on the surface parking would be available for restaurant or.
Somebody bringing their kayak down.
Yeah, there would be a lot of people coming here if they're not going to the restaurant, you know, in the occasional kayak or something like that.
Anybody else, anything else? Okay. All right. Can you lead us into H1, A, B, C, and D?
I guess.
Before we do that, I have one question. I'm looking at the site plan for all the buildings. Have all of these buildings been moved down a little bit closer to Monroe Avenue or is that the way it was a year ago? It looks like building one is closer to Monroe Avenue than.
I would say a very, very perceptive pickup build. And yes, the buildings have moved, I don't want to give you a number, but a few feet towards Monroe Avenue, correct? That's correct. However, the footprints of all the buildings have not changed.
Right.
Why?
I think, again, when we.
Fireboat changed and this thing needed to be four feet wider.
It was a site.
There's a reason, yeah.
Yeah, we're trying to turn around at the end of it.
Jeff Turner, I remember the space on Monroe Avenue, from Monroe Avenue to the first building, was a big issue with the with the village board. Do they have to approve this change?
With who?
The village trustees.
They have to approve the restaurant, okay.
One question at a time. Whatever, I'm not going to comment on what they might have to approve, but in terms of your, this board's job, you got to look at these four factors and look at the plans, you know, whether or not this passes muster or doesn't pass muster with the trustees is irrelevant.
For us, this board.
Right. So, what was your question?
It was basically the same question.
Okay. All right.
So I guess, I would like, just need to have an idea of any other information that this board would like, or analyze A through D. They've got, they've given us this packet. Is there anything else that the board would like to see that specifically relates to the four findings required in order, in order for this hardship to you to add on a yes? Or they add on a no? But that's what I think they need to leave with.
I.
Doesn't make any sense. I can try to.
No, that makes sense.
Oh, my God, write that down.
This might be that everyone else is already familiar with this, but since I'm coming back on right now, I'm not sure what pushed you into, what was the objection by the other board that brought this to our table?
Actually, for this board's purposes, it's probably not relevant, what the objections were.
Okay.
I think that this process, the sub-paragraph H process presumes that there's an inconsistency.
Yeah.
And what, and the four findings we're being asked to review, they're made in the affirmative, notwithstanding that inconsistency, the four findings in this area result in a consistency determination. That's why it's a hardship. You're saying, yes, we know. However, because of A, B, C, and D findings, this project can go forward.
Knowing the composition of the board, I'll ask my specific questions, requests, thinking that the others will be covered. So I'll just start there. I want to go back to D. You've simply said unprecedented canal access, and I would like specifics for the public benefit. The gazebo, like, what is the access? What can be guaranteed for the public?
I have to complete it.
Detail it. Very clean. I just actually wanted a little much here. I want a little more in writing as to what is available to the public for this project, right? We are using the R5. I can think of a lot, but I don't want to think I want it to be in writing.
I understand.
Thank you. Thank you.
So on D, I would also say that I think public is used both ways. You know, public coming to the site in the overall public good, that this site is providing overall public benefit to the region and the state.
Agreed.
For people to come along and, you know, if you don't want to stay in the house, you can come here.
Whatever.
An Asian place or whatever it may be.
Yeah.
That's a benefit for the village.
There's a lot of details, not just.
Was that your question? Because this question's different.
Well, you're saying that it's public benefit to just have this site not being a brownfield anymore, right?
Well, there's, I mean, there's a lot of public benefits. What I guess I was, what I was trying to say is, I can see more public benefit, regional, village, state, than just people coming out of the site.
I agree with you, and I would just, I think that is a place that there's a lot of room to add to this to make it a guest.
In the application.
I'll, I'll, I understand your question. I will answer that question in much more detail.
Were there some elevations that were requested?
Right, we have that down here. Elevations.
Continuous elevation.
I don't think, I mean, I don't think we need to do one of the entire site. I was actually thinking.
The elevation of.
The clubhouse area.
Clubhouse area.
Canal. I understand that.
So we just addressed H, D here. H1D.
Elevations.
Yeah, asked for that. And I think the other easy one is C, that's one or more of the policy standards, the design guidelines. I think we.
I think we, I didn't count them, but I think the planning board found there to be.
About 12 or something.
Four or five or something that were consistent, maybe three or four that were not a, what's it, three, no, not a, three that were consistent, and then three that weren't consistent. So I've always looked at C as being the easiest lift, because the planning board has already found there would be numerous ones that are consistent.
Right.
But that's not my determination. I'm not sure that.
So then.
Chris, you could just set out which ones.
Okay, I understand for C, that's what you want.
To be consistent in connection with C.
Now, Jeff, talk to us about A, though, the reasonable alternatives.
Well, I'm not going to take the applicant's position or thunder on this, but I think Christina started to touch on that a little bit with all of the iterations that have, we've gone through on this site, years of litigation, the special permits were, oh, that was your question, Kendra? The restaurant. Those special permits will be issued in.
July 2019.
July 2019. So, you know, so the R5 code has a maximum. This is somewhere below the maximum. I mean, I, so, you know, those are the kind of things that I thought we could look at, but certainly if the applicant has more things that are impactful, the alternative issue, reasonable alternative issue, then that would be whatever the, whatever you're thinking could be helpful. I don't want to presume to speak for the board, but those are the kind of things that I was thinking of when I was reading this.
And then there's B. I'm a little lost on this one. I think we need some undertaking in a manner that would minimize all adverse effects of the policy standards. So what, again, Jeff, I'm kind of looking your way for elaboration on that.
And, you know, I would say that it's sort of the kind of things that we've already talked about a little bit. You know, again, Christina was, was with this project a long time, and Bill McBride, who has lived with this project a long time, have looked at a lot of alternatives. And I think, Zach, when you talk about minimizing the adverse effects, I sort of read, I sort of read A and B together.
I'd like you to outline the environmental components to this building. You said it's not going to be lead, but I see that as minimizing anything, and I think being more specific.
Want me to detail out the green infrastructure concepts?
So, just working would be a little bit more, you know, I'm thinking of the, the big adverse effects that this board saw, which were mass scale and stock.
I mean, I'm looking at things that are actually under our purview. As interested as I am in green architecture, I don't even know that we have jurisdiction to dictate what green architecture you're doing. I'd love.
We can't dictate any of it, but we have to judge whether this project meets these standards. And not all of that is within our purview, is approving the project, but just whether or not the project itself does this.
Does this LWRP actually dictate green standards? I actually don't have that.
It's additional things that we want to do to market.
To market.
That are also good for the environment.
Okay.
Mostly.
And it talks about for 14 protective measures.
Jeff Turner, does the existence of the new restaurant, a larger building on the water, complicate that issue a bit?
Well, they don't.
Well, we have not, we have not really reviewed that building formally and haven't done anything. And I, I do know that, from what I heard from the Planning and Zoning Board review, they were a little concerned about contamination of of water from the restaurant. Does that impact how we respond to this at all? We have, we, this is a new, that building is new for us. We have not had a lot of deliberation over that.
Just let me answer two ways. First, the idea has been in the project since, since pretty, since day one. And again, we have two special permits. When we were looking at this project a few years ago, when it was denied, the restaurant was in front of the project on Monroe Avenue. The regulating plan, which was the original concept in the special permit, had a restaurant in the middle of the site where the clubhouse is. So we actually removed the building that was in front, eliminated it, and put the restaurant and the clubhouse back together in the middle. So it's not a new idea. It never left. It's back to where it originally was in the beginning. With regard to the planning, the planning board did ask questions on how the restaurant handles their oil separation and things like that. We'll handle that with a separate oil separation tank, which you'll find at every restaurant, which will meet building code. There won't be French fry grease going into the canal.
That's going to be controlled by building code.
Yeah, you know, of course, that kind of thing, too.
Unless it's visible.
It won't be visible.
So it's a little confusing. I mean, after all, there's going to be a sewer there, you know? I mean, I.
Yeah.
Lost on that.
No, no, I think he picked up just on a conversation the planning board had, just asking how that works.
So, as I'm sitting here thinking about this and reading B, it seems like every time you read this, you can find another wrinkle.
I know we're looking for wrinkles, Jeff.
My God, man. It seems to me that one way to look at this is, if you look at the adverse effects that the planning board found, and you might give us some information or some thoughts about how this project is minimizing those adverse effects.
Specifically, I was going to build on that. Number 11 is one where it was inconsistent, the enhance visual quality and protect the outstanding scenic resources. So rather than just saying canal access, you could elaborate on that. I think that's one option. It's not just mass and scale.
Where you're going to?
Unless, again, I'm incorrect in how I'm interpreting this. There are the 15 different.
Okay, you're in the LWRP criteria.
Right, I'm in the criteria. And number 11 is one that the planning board found inconsistent. So go into more detail beyond just mass and scale, because I mean, that's what we've spent most of this meeting going over, but to protect the outstanding scenic resources.
So my point, I think what Kendra is making as well, is they, they found 111 and 12 to be inconsistent.
Right. Well, what I don't want to do, and I don't think you're asking me to, and I think what you told Christina is, planning boards need a negative determination on three things. That's, those are their thoughts. Now, you have a chance to come up with your own thoughts. I'll happy to answer your questions, but I can't defend what they.
Well, I think what Kendra is asking us to do is construct the reasons why we do not think.
If that's her question, I'll answer that.
No, no, hold on. Chris, let me finish my thought.
Yes.
So they found 111 and 12 to be inconsistent.
Right.
Okay. Our specific charge under B, sorry, is the action would be undertaken in a manner which will minimize all adverse effects on such LWRP policy standards, conditions, and design guidelines. So I'm suggesting that some thoughts from you and your team about how this project is presently designed minimizes those adverse.
I understand. We'll go back.
True.
I understand. Is that what you're, okay.
For point B.
Got it.
Yeah.
And we talked about A. Same kind of thing, Chris, really. Well, come back with, no reasonable alternative exists. So you've gone through these other iterations. I just want to make sure that the face is covered. So we need to ask any other questions of these guys to make sure that these items are addressed. So when they return, we can act on it appropriately.
And I would think it's good, a little bit of an answer here. So it's going to be a productive meeting.
Yeah.
Kendra, you were just about to ask something. Just ask.
I feel like, hey, I feel like A was addressed in the proposal and I've, well, that's been going over all the other things that I want from you. So I personally felt like A was addressed in what you gave to us.
In the latter.
Okay.
But I, I do feel like I have the canary in my mouth, because the one thing that I will just very frankly say, because I've been a villager for a very long time, not the beginning in 2008, but I've watched the plans change a lot and it is a common concern among neighbors that the plans keep changing. And so I just want to make sure that the planning board and the HP, that we all have the same plans from this point and forevermore, so that we're all navigating the same thing publicly.
Yeah.
So that was really my only request for A is I feel like you outlined it. It has changed. It has been reduced in size, et cetera.
So I can just discuss that. I've heard that before.
Right, so
And so what I did, just so that you know, if you don't know, I made these pretty binders for this board and the planning board. So everyone has the same plans, the site plan, you have the site plan, this doesn't really pertain to you, and they have the architectural plans, which don't really specifically pertain to them. So right now, we're on an even keel. Now, you know, when we go back to the planning board and they say move that parking space over, their plan's going to be different than your plan. So that's just how this progression works, but right now, everyone's on the same page as best that I could.
And as a new board member with my first meeting with you, I just wanted to address the elephant in the room and say thank you.
Yeah.
This, this is great and that's what I needed for A in the first place.
And I think for our purposes, the local waterfront consistency review is a big picture snapshot. It's not whether or not a fire hydrant moves 10 feet or a building moves one foot or parking spaces go 15 feet over and something else comes in. I think it's a big ticket.
So back to A then, it seemed like Kendra's questions were answered. Does it? We're going to, we're going to, so let me repeat what I, I'm hearing from you. You can stop me. We're going to, we're going to come back with detail of the water elevation, especially on that clubhouse section to really see that a little better.
Yeah.
To see what the architect can do there. We're going to come back with detail of all the public use areas. Uh, C, we're going to, we're going to break that out and describe that. The green infrastructure detail concepts, we're going to detail that. And then go back to the specific items that weren't addressed or that the PCBA didn't think were acceptable and try to detail those out for you. On our, our, yes.
Yeah.
Is that H? I mean, what was that?
I thought that was B, so that would be the 111 and 12 of them.
We have opportunity to ask for anything more of these guys here.
I would just say a reminder of materials, if you can bring your materials.
Bring your materials.
Yeah. Thank you.
Man, I don't know what you're thinking about, but you might bring them in a state in which you hopefully can go and see one. Like, it's going to be weathered metal.
Sure. Bring it with weathered.
Yep. Oh, in my garage, my blowtorch.
I'm cracked it.
Check with your furnace.
So is there permits needed from the Water Canal Authority?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
What?
And we actually just, we just, Chris had a meeting with the Canal Authority, I guess.
Executive Director.
Executive Director.
Right.
He's expecting our application. He remembers what it was before. He said, what's taken so long? We said, we're coming back. So he's ready for us. I, I think that'll go through. Obviously, we need approvals from all the other agencies. DOT, Department of Health.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. And I think it would great, I'd do today have a timeline on that or
Those, once the site plan is approved again and we get the certificate of appropriateness, then, then that stuff happens again.
Okay.
And that takes, you know, four to six months, back and forth with the agencies.
I love the 2023 on here, though. We're all on the rails.
Okay.
What?
The 2023 on the site plans, like when it was done.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, on the bridge.
Yeah.
Any, anything else?
Phil, did you
Nothing.
Need drawings that you were interested in? As, as I see it, one of the main things that we've dealt with is this, the mass, the scale. And did you have any concerns with that? It was building seven, we've talked about quite a bit and I, that's the only difference from what we saw in November that
Right.
Was there anything
The only I asked for when we, when we review this is I'd, I'd like to see hard numbers on cubic feet with the separation of the, the two buildings on, and seven and moving that up. I want to make sure we're still at, what, 1,890 cubic feet totally? Which is a 35% reduction. I just want to make sure we're not abusing that.
Yeah, we can look at that. I mean, I think we've changed some, I don't know when that calculation was done, but some of the roof configurations have changed, which may have pushed it up and down, but we can go back.
It's this February 23rd letter.
That's when it was, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get a more accurate number, but I can tell you it's going to be slightly more. It's not, because we changed the roofs.
There may be more gable roofs than there were at that time. We can go back and look, but if, if it is more, we can certainly tell you why and then you can evaluate from there and say, okay, and I don't, I don't know. That's good.
Okay. Anything else, Phil? Hello, Phil? Okay.
No.
No, all right.
I'd like to make a motion to a chair.
Okay, please make a motion.
I just did. I made a motion to the chairman, please.
Yes, question?
I just have one question. This is Dave Marshall, Chair of the City of Flatiron Road Special Committee on Planning Board.
Yep.
Will there be a public hearing and a public comment period for the appeal process? When will that occur and when will it happen?
The HPV doesn't have public hearings.
No.
So will be, currently your understanding is the appeal process, there will be absolutely no public comment or public hearings?
We've never, we've never said no to public comments.
Okay, so
So it's a possibility, yeah.
So may I ask then, when a meeting is scheduled for the appeal process, will you open a public comment period at that time?
I don't see why not.
Sure, the chair's called, sure, I mean.
Yeah.
And specifically a public hearing and additional public comment period to the
Can we have the authority to do that?
No, we don't, we don't, the board has never functioned by public hearing.
It may not have, but this is a significant opportunity for the public to voice their opinions on the project. Is that something
Can I tell you, I mean, it's up to the board, but we've, we've never turned down public comment.
Yeah.
So, um, what are you looking for specifically, like in
Public hearing.
And how's it different from public comment available?
Public comment is just written comment. It's not spoken comments. So if people were to come before the board and there's a public hearing, then we would often learn about can we speak publicly? With the public comment period is just, we receive information right
We, we've never, we've never turned down verbal public comment.
No, we, we often have people come, attend the meetings and speak whatever their concerns are. So I hope that falls under the term public hearing, but everyone's welcome to
A whole different process.
And I just wanted to remind them that there would be an opportunity to express their opinion regardless of the appeal process.
Figure out the form of that, but
Do I have a second?
Sorry?
Do I have a second?
Yeah, that's already, that's already
Sorry, I didn't
It's already made.
Okay.
Member McBride?
Uh, yes.
Member Evans? Yes. Member Olson?
Yes.
Member Vanahan?
Yes.
Chair Pollock?
Yes.
Motion carries.